What's going on everyone? Welcome to another edition of the Victory Life Legacy Spotlight. Today I have a very influential person. He was a phenomenal athlete, but he did great things in the community right now. A guy that I remember playing against for a few years and I watched him play after I was done. Then we had a few battles in college. None other than my guy, Marcellus Harris, also known around the way as B2.
That's right, B2. That's what they know me for.
So man, you are doing some great things, man. And, you know, I remember seeing you play in Ferguson. That's why I tried to get you the hoodie, you know, to match.
Yeah, hey, the colors, a lot of colors.
But at the same time, man, you are a definition of more than an athlete. But before we talk about the great things you're doing for the state of Virginia, and especially down in the 7-5, let's talk about your journey, where it all started, you know? The 7-5-7 is known for a lot of great athletes, you know, from the legends of Aaron Brooks and Allen Iverson, and Mike, and so many guys, Ronald Curry, Tyrod Taylor, but there are other guys like yourself who were just, you know, dynamic and talented. What got you into sports on a youth level? Who did you play for? Dora Miller, Wyce Thomas? Who did you play for? And what do you remember about those times growing up?
Oh, man, you're taking me back. Playing, you know, it's a little bit different now with these youth leagues and how things are organized within the city. But growing up, I was a part of a program called the Oyster Point. They were the Blue Devils at the time. The Newport News, Parson Rec, Newport News, they don't have the city leagues anymore. It's more private owned, so it's a lot different with how things are done. But that's how I got my start, man. It's funny because I went on, played receiver. I was one of those skilled guys. People know football, you know, receivers, running backs, defensive backs. But I actually started playing football in a position that you were known for. I was on the offensive line when I first started. It was crazy. I was blocking for a friend of mine who became one of my best friends. It's actually my daughter's godfather, David Macklin. And so that's how we met. Played ball together, grew up. Then he went to Mitchfield. I'm at Ferguson, a little rivalry, personal friendly rivalry. But it all started on the football fields for the Oyster Point Blue Devils. And then getting over there, getting out of the Newport News city leagues and going over there, playing them Hampton teams, which were tough teams, Parson Rec. But that's when the grind started. That's when the grind started, Oyster Point, and then going on playing basketball for the city. So everything was from the city.
Yeah, no. And by the way, for all the college coaches that watch my legacy spotlights, you posted a video, that was your son, right? Out there making plays.
Yeah, my son, man. He's, he's, he's come a long way. This is his second year, playing tackle football, started playing flag. You know, with everything going on with the pandemic, they postponed the fall season and they had a spring season, a semi-spring season. And he's, he's coming into his own, man. Proud to see his growth. And like I tell people, he's already ahead of me because I was an offensive lineman at his age.
Yo, that's still funny to me, man. You were blocking, man. You became a dynamic skill player. But at the same time, man, it's good to see your son. I saw the video. I watched it like eight times. It's really cool to see that, that cycle of life occur where now you get to back, get to give back to him and pour that wisdom that you have in him. And he looked great just to be in his second year. I mean, and he had the swag and all that. The uniforms have come a long way since we played.
All the way around, man. Even from when we were in high school and seeing these high school teams. And when I coached in the high school level and seeing what these kids have nowadays, you know, I wish I could have, you know, had another, came up in another era sometimes with all the good stuff they got.
Yeah, man. They, I mean, yeah, I remember Newman gloves and taping my jersey so it could be tight. But, you know, you mentioned something about fatherhood and you mentioned seeing your son and how proud you are. You come from a great family. Talk about, before we talk about your career and all the great things you did, you know, on the court and the field, you know, your parents, your family, and the impact they've had on you even now, and what they showed you even probably when you didn't realize it, and how inspiring that is for you.
Man, I tell anybody all the time, I would not be where I am if it wasn't for me having the father that I have and just trying to emulate the things that I witnessed him do and experienced him throughout the time of growing up and developing into a young man and becoming into an adult. It's just been powerful. Because a lot of what I said I would not do as a kid, saying my dad doing this and that, I would never do that. I would never be one speaking in public. I would never be one seeking a public office. I would never be one putting all my time into trying to help people. Because you know, at a young age, we're more, a little more selfish. But then now I find myself aligned to all of the things that my father was doing and just witnessing. So, I mean, a lot of the young people I work with that may not have male mentors, role models, those are some of the things I take very serious because I know the influence of the male models that I've had. Like I said, my father's one. Good friend, mentor of mine, who was a basketball coach, longtime basketball coach at Warwick High School, who I actually have his picture up on my wall. I don't know if you can see it, the Coach Ben Moore from Warwick High School.
I knew who you're talking about.
Another one of the male mentors that had a big influence on me and I found myself coaching. And he was a minister with my father as well. And like I said, I just kind of found myself walking in the same path. And then I can't forget, you know, Coach Tommy Raymond, who was another mentor.
Yes.
That, like I said, these are guys that coach, empower young people, give selfishly, and all those traits that I just somewhat inherited just by trying to emulate the impact that they had on others, especially such as myself. And then I'd be, you know, having black male educators. I was fortunate. I had a number of black male educators and not the same other educators that I had, teachers, counselors, and coaches that I may have had across my lines of matriculating through school, didn't have an impact. But just seeing black male mentors that looked like me and making it look cool made it something that I wanted to do. And I can't, I'm very serious when it comes to being a role model and coach because of those influences, how they greatly navigated my path. And I just want to be able to do that for others.
And you're doing it, man. And I'm so glad you mentioned Coach Reiman. Shout out to Coach Reiman and also Coach Moore. No, I love him, man. No, I didn't know Coach Moore as well as you did, but I definitely know Coach Reiman. I knew of him because of my time playing basketball and the battles between Warwick and Hampton. And I knew what men said about him the same way you feel other guys said. But I just want to say this. I want to ask you this, I should say. When you were, I had, I had a lot of guys on this show, DJ Parker from Phoebus, you know, I mentioned, you know, Ahmaud Hawkins, and so many guys from that late 80s, 90s, early 2000 era, which I personally consider the golden era of the 7-5 Peninsula District sports, right?
I say it all the time.
It's the golden era. I mean, not just from the crowd being sold out, but the competition, just the euphoria that goes with all the teams and talent, but the coaches is what I really say that for is because I don't think you will see ever again a district in football and basketball in the Commonwealth with the guys you mentioned, like Ben Moore, Coach Brower, you know, Reiman, Bill D., Mike Smith, Kurt Newsome at Kickitane, and I apologize if I forget somebody. Oh, but Coach Kozlowski at Bethel. You don't, you know, you're down there and I'm up in the 703, but you don't see that longevity and the personal attention they put into people way beyond the field and the court. It was personal. They wanted to make sure you guys were fed, clothed, in class, and taking care of your family. Do you share those same sentiments?
Oh, without a doubt. I mean, what the, the impact that those guys that you just mentioned had on so many people, young people that are now either doing the same thing or trying to follow those footsteps or whether in some other endeavor, the impact that those guys had on the lives of so many is invaluable. Even Coach Katusis, that was at Demby for years.
Yes, thank you.
Coach Quillen, Coach Quillen, that was at Demby and Heritage and went on to win a state championship at Heritage. These, these guys, man, they, their impact is just, the legacy, as you call this, the leaving your legacy. The legacy, the impact that they have is immeasurable because of you, your reward as a coach is to see those lives that you were able to help develop into young adults come to fruition. And their work and the fruit that they've had extended off the trees that they've, you know, where they planted and set up shop for years. And they were at schools for 15, 20 years. Such as your high school coach, legendary Coach Smith, he's still there.
He's still there.
I mean, I don't know with the culture that we have now, and I'm seeing it now as I'm running a youth sports foundation, football and cheer right now, trying to branch off into some other, some other sports. However, the culture, the environment, some parents are different than it was. And you know, it makes it a lot harder where coaches are now. I know it was an article last week in Virginia Beach, like five or six high school coaches resigned or took other positions.
Yeah, seven, seven or eight of them.
Seven, yeah. So I mean, it's becoming more of a challenge and financially is hard because as you said, these coaches will spend their last penny on outside of their household to make sure their, their kids, their student athletes are straight, you know, going on to college campuses. I think the first time I went onto a college football field was when Coach Raymond took myself and your cousin, Mike Vick, to University of Virginia football camp. These were things that we would have never been able to do or have an opportunity to do if it wasn't for what these coaches were doing and to an extent, still doing to this day.
You know, you mentioned Coach Reiman. I had Chip Laws on, you know, his legacy spotlight. He was the former standout quarterback and after the Kickitane High School. And we had, yeah, and Chip was talking about, me and Chip were both talking about our admiration for Coach Tommy Reiman, how he was ahead of his time. First of all, we didn't have the honor to play for him. Now, obviously, I've been around him so much, you know, from our relationship with Mike Marcus, Brendan Hill, and so many guys. But the fact that, you know, I'm a few years older. I was a senior when you were a sophomore. But we played against Ferguson and we, when we practiced for them and then when he went to Warwick, you know, you're talking about spending so much time on going against four and five wide receiver sets, you know, and emotions and misdirection. And he had, he had some quarterbacks. And he was to me, he arguably, and this is just me talking honestly, he might have been the brightest football mind in the state during his time because he played at that level. But he was, because you know, now everybody's, you know, spread, you know, and motion and mistook. But you talk about just, not just his impact, because you talked about how much he cared, but just what you saw as a player playing for him in preparation and his scheme and just what he brought to the table.
Well, let me share this with you first because I like to share this story when I have an opportunity to, especially for young, young student athletes that, you know, is a different generation. You know, I was coaching at Demby for 11 years and, you know, our young people have a different way about going toward their goals sometimes. Not to say it's right or wrong, but that's how times, times are, you know. We evolve and we got to evolve with the times as well. However, my ninth, eighth grade year, I was a JV quarterback at Ferguson. Played a little wide receiver as well. My ninth grade year, played some JV, played some varsity. I'll never forget, we played you guys my ninth grade year. Y'all were like the, like damn Florida State was like the top college team. We like, man, the crowd was like Florida State out there. You guys had a free safety who went to Florida State.
Sean Hamlet, Sean Hamlet.
Yeah, y'all had all those guys over there, Walter Ford, DeMar, the news. I was like, man, look how big these jokers is a ninth grader. So I'm playing with my man on the sideline. We playing y'all over at Darlington Stadium. And Coach Raymond calls me and, "B2, you going in as such and such?" And I'm like, yo, I ain't, I wasn't ready for that at the time. But we got out there, man. Brooks threw me a little screen pass, whatever. I hear these monsters coming flying at me a thousand miles per hour. I think I tipped the ball up and got an interception. But that's just sharing that with you. But going into my 11th grade year, I was starting at quarterback, the first four or five games. And Coach Raymond called me to his office and, you know, that was a big thing. I'm replacing Aaron Brooks at quarterback. We throwing the ball around, you know. I'm thinking I'm the man, you know, you know, quarterback's a big deal in high school. You know, getting girls, plus slide your numbers to you and all that other stuff. But, you know, I was looking forward to it. I was a man walking in the hallways. But Coach Raymond called me in the office and he said, "We'll move you to wide receiver." Mind you, I've been waiting all this time to play quarterback. He's there and they're gonna move me to wide receiver. Was I a little upset at first? Yeah, because I'm thinking, I'm looking at it as a demotion, so to speak.
Yeah.
But I'm, you know, but I'm still starting, but I'm just not starting at the position that I wanted to play at first. But he told me he was gonna start a freshman. So I'm like, gonna start a freshman over me? I'm 11th grade. Long story short, I moved to wide receiver and he puts your cousin in at quarterback, Michael Vick.
Yes, sir.
And we play our first game, like I said, the first 15, 20 minutes of the, after leaving out his office, you know, I was in my feelings a little bit, came front. But however, I just stuck with it because I trusted in what Coach Raymond was doing. And what ended up happening, not that first game, because that first game, he, he had to move me to wide receiver and put a freshman in at quarterback against Phoebus of all, all teams. It was a little tough. It was a little tough. I'm actually playing wide receiver and calling the plays with the quarterback because he's a freshman and just trying to help him out a little bit. But that next game, we went out, Vick threw for like, Mike Vick threw for like 440 some yards and I had like 200 some yards receiving. And immediately I went from having a little buzz from college recruiters to now starting to get a lot of colleges, starting to be interested in, in me playing wide receiver. And I share that story with you because Coach Raymond saw something that I didn't see. He saw something that even my parents didn't see because they were, you know, like, why you moving my kid out of quarterback? So, long story short, it all ended up being the perfect scenario for all of us. I went on to be a D1 wide receiver.
Yes, sir.
Mike went on to be a first round draft choice at quarterback. And I'm sharing that to share this with you. When you say Coach Raymond and his brilliance as a football mind, he sees stuff in individuals that it is a special skill that you gotta have and being able to help us get on the right path of what's going to be destined for us. And he had that. He had. And he may not have the state championships. He may not have all the rings that come with being what you would consider a great football mind. But what he saw in each individual that he was able to cultivate into being the best person and put them in the best position to be successful. And that's what he did with me. Now, I could have piled it. I could have quit. I could have transferred, which unfortunately, a lot of times, things happen when teenagers are unhappy and families are unhappy. But just having that trust in him and just because of that, to this day, I'm always in debt and gratitude with him. Even today, when I see him, I'm like a little baby, a little kid, because I see him as such on a high pedestal and where he was allowing me to go. And he's just a great, great man, great individual. He still hugs and kisses me like I'm his teenage son. But that's because it's what's ingrained in him to bring out in so many others.
You know, I don't know why I didn't start the show with this, but I meant to ask you, I've been, all these years I've known you, even before I knew you, I knew, I heard of you on the come up. Where did you get, you know, your nickname? Because down our way, Newport News and Hampton and Portsmouth, you know, my wife jokes me, she said, man, y'all got some of the wildest nicknames, you know, Bubba, Bubba Stuck, B2, Fruit Loop. And I'm like, you know, I never thought about it till I got to Virginia Tech because it was just.
You got Biscuit, you got all kinds of names.
Yeah, yeah. So what did, for all the people that's gonna watch this, man, because that's, I don't know if every, you know, you just hear, oh, yes, B2, what's up, dude? You know, you don't even know. Where'd that come from?
Yeah, well, I'm Marcellus is a crazy story. I'm Marcellus Lee Harris III. So everybody's like, where you get the two from? Well, my dad obviously is Marcellus Junior. His nickname is Butch. So I'm, instead of the traditional Butch Junior, which he was already junior, so it would have been some confusion for some with that as well. They called me Butch the Second. I was born during the year Star Wars came out, so that was the thing at best. You know, so instead of BJ, they put, they dad me as a B2.
No doubt. We finally got that out there. I can't wait for people because, you know, I've been asked, I remember back, back in the day, I was like, I don't really know where that came, but like, yo, B2 in the game, you know. But at the same time, that nostalgia with your nickname and those battles and Coach Reiman, that was a great time, man. And, you know, you played in the district, as we mentioned, when it was very competitive, man. So you talk about when Mike came on the scene. I'm going to get to Mike's skill set in a second. I want to talk about your versatility, versatility as an athlete, the fact that you did play different positions and you also used to hoop and you were an impact player in both. It's so funny now because you've coached a lot longer than me. I coached football and basketball, but you've coached more consistently. But we both work with the youth. It is a different time now. You talk to kids now, seventh grader thinking about offers and exposure. You're like, bruh, you and I didn't play with that in mind. We know we eventually wanted to go, but, you know, when did a light bulb go off for you? When you, when, what year did it go off for you where you're like, yo, I could really play the next level? Not only that, I'm one of the best players in the Peninsula District, one of the best players in the Eastern Region? Or did you never really put yourself in that category? When did it go off for you?
Well, that's a good question, man, because I never really, never really thought about that moment when I felt I was what people saw me as. You know, like you said, growing up, we were just balling to have something to do. Neighborhood balling, we was out playing. For us, we called it Killer Man. Kids call it something else nowadays. My son goes out, he calls him Mossy Man or whatever they call it. But, I mean, it was just about having fun with your friends, whether you had the basketball court, whether you had the field, throwing the ball up in the air, trying to get, shake somebody and score a touchdown, whatever it is. And it just delved into being a part of a high school team. And that's, and you know, I said we played rec league, but it was because your friends was out there playing rec.
No doubt, yeah.
The camaraderie that you built and wanting to be out there because you saw David out there. You saw my man out there. You just wanted to be out there with them. Football, basketball is what we did. But when I got to answer your question, when I got in, probably more so when I started having some success at receiver. I mean, like I said, I was getting a little buzz at quarterback, but you know, colleges weren't really throwing the ball like they are now.
How they do.
All over the field. So I was like, man, I, I thought quarterback was the only way I can get somewhere. But then seeing how I started to get some interest, I actually thought basketball was going to be my, my go-to. I love basketball.
And you could hoop too. I remember. You could hoop.
Yeah, I love basketball. I had some scholarships to some, some HBCU schools to play, which I was considering. But when I started realizing that at 5'9", 5'10", it's not so many 5'9", 5'10" point guards unless you shoot the ball like my man, Marce Brown could. But you know, and Coach Raymond shared that with me. And he was upfront, honest. He was like, I don't know if you had, how many conversations you had with Coach Raymond, he was like, son, you know, it's, it's, it's a thousand 5'9", 5'10" point guards all across the country. But it's not a lot of people, it, it, there's more opportunities for you on the football field. And I love football, love basketball, because like I said, for me, it was more so the camaraderie. I just wanted to be around the guys. And, you know, when you have a goal, trying to win a game and the work throughout the week that you do to go out there to accomplish it, that's, that's what drove me each and every day. But once I got into my senior year and then I started getting to a place where colleges wanted me to come visit. North Carolina State, Maryland, Boston College, had some interest from UVA, Virginia Tech. And then ultimately I ended up at East Carolina. And that was a large part because East Carolina was one of the few schools that was throwing the ball around and playing wide receiver. I would not want to go to a school where I can get my hands on the ball a little more. And I was following a class, well, not classmate, but a teammate who was a couple of years ahead of me, Linwood DeBru from Ferguson, who went down there to East Carolina. And once I got on campus, it kind of went off like, this is serious. This is not high school football anymore. It's Division One football. And I still had fun with it, but I knew that I'm at a point now that I must be okay where I can keep playing football, having fun on this level.
You know, Marcellus, man, you mentioned Coach Reiman, you imitated him. But at the same time, that's that honesty that I think is kind of missing because it's tough now to be honest with players because now it seems like these guys come to the table with their agenda. And I'm glad that these young men and young women are educated on what their goals are. But at the same time, there's a bit of a benefit to educating yourself but also being coached. And you were described when I, you know, did some research and prepared for this interview and also reflecting on what I knew of you back in the day, you were well coached and you were raised right. But at the same time, I just want to ask you this question. You mentioned during that time, you know, the era that we played in and how it was, you know, that district at that time was loaded, you know, even Lafayette and Gloucester, you had to beat them. But Kickitane, Demby, Demby was so physical. They had those three running backs, number one, number two, and number three. I forgot their names. But, you know, they, everyone was just, it was physical. It was a tough time, but you held your own. Take me back to, you can do football and basketball. Start with football first. When you say, you know what, this game I was in my bag or like I was, this is a game, if I, when I post it or when I look back, I'm always going to appreciate this matchup. Was it against Hampton or was it against Phoebus? Or was it a playoff? I mean, what, was there a game in football and basketball where you always like, that will always forever be my game?
Well, it's funny you say that because the one game we talk about with, you know, my former teammates from year that we played together at Ferguson is when we played Hampton High School for our homecoming my senior year. Now, we lost the game. But it was our last year of Ferguson. We closed the year, graduated. But it was so much hype during the game, you know. Y'all had one of the legendary guys and himself and Ronald Curry playing quarterback. You know, you had Ahmaud Hawkins out there playing and receiver and DB. But we were so hyped up that game. We got out, went up, I think went up like 14, 13, going into the third or fourth quarter. We end up losing. But it was just, just, you know, the energy of the game. I scored a touchdown, played, had a pretty good game. But why I say that game, it wasn't my best game stat wise, but you know, when you had a good game against Hampton, you felt like you did something. Because the aura that surrounded playing the crowd was back then. So that, that was a very, very, I guess, game that I would, would always remember. That'd be monumental when I think about, you know, going out there in the field and actually feeling like I was one of the best players out there on the football field against a top rated opponent.
And before you tell me about basketball, I'm gonna tell you how I heard about you on the court. We were playing in the old, remember the old Fort Eustis Christmas tournament?
Oh, yeah, man.
I remember, I remember somebody like, yo, they, yo, they got this dude named B2, yo, he liked that. And I was like, who? You know, because you kind of came out of nowhere, because I'm two years older than you. So at that time, when you were junior and senior, you're looking ahead, not looking back. But tell me about your time, you know, basketball, because you know, you know, and the people that played against you and watched you, you hooped as well. Like you, you were standout basketball player.
Yeah. And I didn't even mention my basketball coach, Coach Walters, who was another legendary coach, passed away some years ago. Matter of fact, at Heritage High School, his name, the court's named after him.
Yes, it is, it is.
A longtime coach who was one of those legendary guys that was on the sideline for over 30 years at Ferguson. Won a state championship in 78, 79. But I'll never forget my 10th grade year. We were all, we were loaded, man. We had Aaron Brooks playing shooting guard at 6'4". We had another wing, 6'4", 6'5", Eric Jones. We had Eric Edwards, Eric Jones. We had Antoine Smith, who went on to be CIAA Player of the Year.
Twice, he was twice CIAA Player of the Year.
At St. Paul's College, you know, a brother named Alonzo Dodd. We were loaded. But we went and played at church, the infamous Churchland High School, which where all the regional playoff tournaments took place. And if you didn't get in by a certain time, you would be watching on, or you would be on the outside waiting for people to come out, you can get in. But, but we played a playoff game. I'm the 10th grader with all these guys and I dropped 20 points that game against, it happened to be against Churchland High. And that was a game that I always remember because it happened to be our last game because we didn't, we didn't continue on after that game. But I just remember being out there and playing with guys that I just named who were going on to college and do great things. And like I said, just feeling like I belonged out there. Like I said, I was just out there playing for fun. I was out there playing for fun. I hate to lose. So it was a competitive thing for me, but never really looked at myself as being that guy until, you know, later on when you kind of go back and reflect that, man, maybe I was okay.
No, you were, you were. I, I, yeah, I don't do the manufacturer hype. You were a heck of a player. You know what's crazy too? You mentioned those guys, Eric Jones, Alonzo Dodd, and Antoine Smith, Aaron Brooks. I remember them in football. This is before guys were just specialized. And that's what I mean about your boy, our guy, Coach Reiman, Reiman being ahead of his time. And that's what I mean about, uh, your boy, our guy, Coach Reiman, Reiman being ahead of his time. Because he put them at receiver. The long, I, I remember being on defense, looking at those guys, man. You know, I'm six-four, six-four and a half, and I remember looking at Eric Jones and, and like, you know, Antoine Smith and Aaron, Aaron under the center all day. He's six, almost six-five, but you know, I think it was, it's good to hear you talk about it cuz I remember one of the best matchups I missed. I'm still trying to find the tape. Me and some of my guys, we didn't play that night. And you talk about a nostalgic moment, you guys were playing Bethel and basketball. And everybody, I don't remember what year it was, but you were on the team. And everybody was from Newport, it was in Hampton, were trying to get to that game because it was you and Aaron and everybody you named. And Chuck and Tony and those guys. And it was standard room only. And I couldn't, I don't know if it was a district, so I don't know what, we weren't playing.
Yeah, it was, uh, a- actually that was my, my ninth grade year. I didn't finish my ninth grade year cuz I, that's the year I broke my leg. But we played them at Fort Eustis cuz they also had the district tournament there.
Yes, that's what they did, a district tournament, yes.
Yeah, and man, that was, I, I'll never forget that game. Um, it was crazy, it was crazy. Cuz who would have thought at that time that you were going to see a Hall of Fame basketball player? Uh, who, you know, in Iverson, Chuck, we all call him, the, the world calls him AI, but you know, we call him Chuck. Um, and, and, but we knew he was, it was something special about him. And you had, uh, uh, Steph Curry, before you heard of Steph Curry and Tony Rutland. Everywhere, but people also forget they had a pretty good team with guys like Melvin Stevens and those other guys that was. Crashing those boards. So you, you, you talking about on a court. If I would have played, I would have definitely been the shortest one on the court, but everybody was six-three and. And taller pretty much itself for Iverson. And, and it was just a phenomenal game, man, that people, I wish, I'm glad you said something cuz I want to know somebody that does have that tape.
I'm gonna look for it again. I'm trying to find it cuz I. Because.
But I'll never forget this too. You mentioned those names. I'll never forget a brother that came into our court, our gym. At Ferguson High School and dropped over forty on us by the name of Damon Baker.
Oh, yeah, he's been on the legacy spotlight. My teammate, my brother, yeah, Damon was special.
Oh, he came in the Ferguson, he did us dirty. I'll never forget that. I mean, it, it, it. You just go back and reflect on what we were able to witness growing up. Um, a- 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 as you said, it's the, it was a golden era because I don't think that'll ever be replicated. Now, we still have some talent. Um, but with the way things are set up, you know, some of the top players now going away to private schools, some of the, or, or. Whatever route they feel is going to be best for them, uh, I, I, I don't know if you'll ever see that again, but that was a special time.
No, you, i- i- absolutely. And you won't see it again also too because, and you know this, you're down there, but it's the same thing up in the seven oh three. And even in the eight oh four, it's some of your best athletes like yourself. Don't even want to do it. I, I run into guys that, that looked apart and they, they, they could be special. They have no interest. I think you have more distractions. I mean, people don't even go to the games anymore, even if it's a big game against two, six and two teams. People don't even go to the stadium, Todd and Darling. And I'm not even hating cuz I think there's still a lot of talent there, but I just think things change. I mean. You're talking about, you know, an era that you mentioned, you know, all the talent on the court, guys that went on to the C I double A, Aaron Brooks. Who was special, Damon Baker, who I saw him personally, I was, you know, on the bench, you know, I didn't, I didn't start and I saw him give Demby. Fifty-one points and he only, he was nineteen of twenty from the field and only missed one. It was at the Christmas tournament. Demby was good that year. I mean. Yeah, so it's just a different time, which is why I'm giving you guys your roses now to remind people of what it was, what you guys and what we were a part of, man. And. Speaking of that, man, you mentioned, oh, my cousin Mike, man, I, 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 I definitely want to get your insight on this, man. You know, similar to Aaron, they both played for the legendary Coach Reiman, who was ahead of his time. And he put both those guys in position to just throw the rock. But they also were both in a situation where. For Aaron Brooks, as great as he was, he was at Ferguson. And you had Iverson at Bethel who overshadowed him. And then after they left, you have. Mike and Ronald, Ronald was a national Gatorade Player of the Year in football and basketball. At Hampton, won three state championships, one national championship. All the while, Mike is putting up astronomical numbers. And I remember telling people at tech, yo, I got this, my cousin, man, he's special, but the talk was about Ronald. And we all see now, both of them were great and they both did their thing. And they're still doing great. Ronald's doing great things in the community, coaching in NFL. But at the same time, just talk about from your perspective, cuz you saw the journey with Mike. What was it like then? Did, did you start to see it early? Did you know? He was going to eventually be a Heisman candidate and change the, you know, the position where he impacted. So many quarterbacks, or is it were like, yo, I, I had no idea. What was it like?
You know, my dad had a, a story. I can't word it like he, he words it cuz he's. Like a professor with words, but he tells a story of a man who. Is near, standing next to the skyscraper. And he looks up and he just sees a building as the skyscraper. But when you get away from it and walk away from it, you can see the, the height and that's the. The, the, the impact of what the skyscraper actually looks like from afar and how high it is. As opposed to when you're close next to it and just looking at it. And, and I use that analogy because. When you were, when we were in the locker room together, out on the practice field together, did I know it was something special about him? Yeah, because my fingers are all messed up now from catching passes from him and, and Aaron Brooks. And then going into college and catching passes from a guy who spent ten years as a quarterback named David Garrett. Uh, for, for Jacksonville Jaguars, but we knew it was something special about him. Did we know? If you asked or polled the guys that was in that locker room to say in. Two thousand and one, he was going to be a number one draft pick, lead Virginia Tech to the national championship, turn that program around. In a place where it's nationally recognized as it is, not to say you didn't do your part.
No, 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 you fine, you fine.
He did what to the, to the map.
Well, actually I did do my part. I recruited him.
Yeah, well, yeah, but that, that's another story that I, I gotta share about that as well, um, when it comes to Mike and his recruitment. But, um, going through that time, as you know, we're, we're young, you, you know, we knew he was good, you knew he had talent. Um, but to see him evolve into a player to change the landscape of playing quarterback. Uh, because if he would have came out now in the way offices are set up now, can you imagine? The numbers he would have had, because not only was he special with his, hi- his legs as. You know, everybody knew he was a quarterback, there was break his records for what he did running the football. But he had one of the most magical arms, uh, that anybody who's ever played the game. Um, Coach Ramies always talk about it, he could just flick the ball and it go eighty yards, it seemed like down the football field. Uh, a- a- and it was something that you, obviously being a coach for some years, that was something you can't coach, what he had, what God blessed him with. Uh, uh, you knew if he just followed, um, um, the path ahead of him, he was destined to, to do great things. Um, you know, sometimes we get off track a little bit, but he, he got on path and was able to do the great things. Using the gifts that God blessed him with, because a lot of people may not know, Mike is right-handed. Right, and, and signs, autographs, so he, and he throws, he even punts, he was punting the football one day. I'm trying to figure out what is wrong with you? He's playing with his right foot. I didn't, you know, we, we don't think about anybody being ambidextrous, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, yeah. But I'm like, man, this dude is weird. He's doing all this stuff with his right hand, but when he throws the football, he's throwing it with his left hand and throwing it, throwing darts. But that just goes to tell you how God blessed him with that talent, with that, that left arm and, and legs that, uh. Were going on to, 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 to change the landscape of, of, of football, because now you turn the football game on, whether it's high school, college. Or, or football, you're gonna see a quarterback that, uh, uh, coach wants to kind of do some of the things that. That Mike was able to do, um, in that, that triple threat mode, being able to run, pass. And, 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 and just do those things that, uh, that, uh, some people just can't simply do and defenses have a hard time guarding. Now, going back to your recruiting story, Mike took a official trip to East Carolina. I was his host, um.
Oh, okay, he never told me that.
Yeah, he, he took a trip to East Carolina.
But he didn't tell me, he didn't say B two hosted them, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I was the host, um, it just so happened. His time down, uh, David Garrett was a freshman, a redshirt freshman. And, um, Dave, uh, was, was, he was getting a lot of talk, a lot of hype in the eastern Carolina area for what he did in high school. Um, and what everybody was expecting him to do at East Carolina, and he did well at East Carolina. And, um, uh, I think it was a conversation, uh, uh, Mike had told me that one of the coaches had actually asked him. Uh, if he would be willing to play wide receiver. And he never told me what coach asked him that. But that was pretty much the done deal for him when they asked him to play wide receiver, being that he wanted to play quarterback. I, I, I want to say it was a, a good chance, he might have considered coming to East Carolina, cuz we talked about, you know, playing receiver, quarterback. Connecting again, um, but that kind of, that kind of broke the, broke the back when, uh, you know, that coach asked him that question, whether they meant it or not. Uh, but, uh, but yeah, so yeah, I was his host at East Carolina. Um, we, we had a good time while I was there and, uh, but you know. I, I, I wouldn't change a thing. Where he went was where he was destined to go and everything he was able to do was, uh, all God's.
Yeah, and I will say this, man, um, in that offense y'all had, which has always been tough to stop. You and him, y'all would have been special, man, um, cuz when Mike got comfortable at tech and he was a limited passer, like they didn't even really. It was play action, everything that back then was run first, but when he got open. And he got that run pass going, he was lethal, man. But you know, you, you mentioned, um, Marcellus. East Carolina, which was one of my favorite schools when I was being recruited. I had a lot of offers. And it was something about East Carolina. I think it was Coach Logan was there.
Yeah, yep.
Coach, Coach Jags who went on to Boston College was.
Oh, yeah. He recruited me.
He recruited that area. And I remember, I liked him a lot that he was really young and, you know, he, he could connect with me. And I remember going to visit, man, and I, I really liked, it was close to home, um, you know, they weren't. They were a lot like tech, that you could see they were building something, but.
Yeah, it, that's a good comparison that you say that, cuz when you look back at it then, it was kind of still on a climb. Of, of to getting that respectability in college, but we was ranked consistently in the top twenty-five, in the, in the lower end of the top twenty-five. Um, but we had Coach Logan, similar to Coach Beamer, trying to build it to the program, yeah, so.
I've always looked at it like that. Tech and East Carolina, I used to want East Carolina in the Big East, uh, because. That we wanted y'all in the Big East. You can ask a lot of my teammates, we had so much respect for y'all and, you know, if anything. Y'all, it fit demographically as far as, you know, you, proximity to the, uh, east, east coast schools and mid Atlantic. Even when, excuse me, even when tech went into the ACC, you know, but politics play a part. And it's funny because if you look at East Carolina, Virginia Tech, the reason why they were such a great rivalry. They're very similar except, you know, tech's cut away in the mountains, but the way they both ascended during the nineties into the two thousands. It was that they were both fighting for respect. Their games were always battles, with the exception of a few games. You know, there was a few games, like my senior, your, might have been your freshman year, my senior, we all came. I think we went like thirty-eight to seven or something in Blacksburg.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, we came with a Blacksburg, it was, it was a different experience.
Yeah, yeah, it was ninety-eight, it was my last year, but at the same time, even then, man, I remember being like, I liked y'all colors. Even when we used to play y'all down there, you know, first down, pirates. I remember, listen, no, so with that being said, man, just touch on a little bit about your time at East Carolina, you know, because. Um, you know, now it's different, like you play college ball with there's so many games on TV, social media. You can actually manufacture hype where you think somebody had a record-setting year and he might only had twenty catches, but. Everything's so magnified now, right? But you had a very, you were a consistent player there. But what do you remember about playing college ball, the adjustments and what kind of career did you feel like you had at East Carolina?
Man, I, I loved my experience while I was down at East Carolina, uh, like I said, I followed in the footsteps of, of Linwood De Bru. Um, from Ferguson to East Carolina, and we actually played the same position. Um, my redshirt freshman year was his senior year and right, uh, third, fourth week of the year, sea, of the season. Uh, he tore his ACL, so I had to step in and I started the rest of the year, uh, cuz he was out, um. But, you know, as you said, you made that comparison, which I never really thought about it, but it's, that's a, a, a great comparison because. Greenville, North Carolina is similar to Blacksburg, Virginia. There's not a lot to do outside of the area, it's a college town. And when you had a football game in East Carolina, it's like the whole eastern North Carolina would come out and invade Greenville, North Carolina. Or like the whole, uh, we were in Greenville, you got Little Washington, Rocky Mount, Wilson, all these surrounding towns. Pretty much everybody with Kinston, Little, like I said, they would all come down and they're in Dottie Ficklin Stadium. Uh, to enjoy a football game, um, and you know. Going from where you had games at Todd Stadium or Darling Stadium where we, we had decent crowds in our day. But it's nothing like the passion that those college football fans have or their community school, uh, regional school. Uh, uh, when they can get up in the morning and have a reason to drink beer from eight o'clock to game time. It's a party environment, uh, uh, so, and then going down there, being in the eastern North Carolina and seeing people cook. Full pigs and having them out there and, and, uh, you know, they, they, they treated us, it's special because they, they were like, we were their entertainment. Uh, we were their, um, heroes in the community with, you know, as you're a college athlete, you're going into elementary schools, middle schools, a lot of community work. Uh, uh, this is kind of where I took heed to where I found my calling as well, uh, because of being in, in that, in the Greenville area. And, and just seeing how people, whether they had love for me or love for who I was playing for, uh, you know. How that can go, uh, however, it's just, um, just being a part of that whole pirate vibe, uh, uh, at the time and. Um, seeing that we were build, trying to build something to a place where we could be talked about in. The top programs in the country, cuz we always had it on our shoulder. Uh, we felt, we took pride in working harder than everybody else. Uh, you know about strength and conditioning coaches. Craziest ones in the country, but that crazy strength and conditioning coaches had us ready to fight out there on that football field every Saturday. And that just built the, 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 the atmosphere in which, uh, brought us together because as a football team. That you, all you got out there in them stadiums. And once you get to that place where you feel that you fighting with your brother out there, i- is no better feeling. And if I wouldn't been, if I wouldn't have played at East Carolina. I would have some of the relationships I have now and the brotherhood that I have now, um, so I, I. I, I, I was blessed to be able to find myself in that situation. And like I said, God always, uh, he, he has a providential plan for us, so he had me. Being at East Carolina at that time and meeting the people that I did and having a career that I had.
And let me just add to this, man, again, I speak for so many, um, Hokeys, where we had. Still have the utmost respect, especially during that time, because I'll just add, uh, before I hit you with the next question about East Carolina is that. The reason why I always felt that y'all would have been a good conference, um, team is because. It was so weird, y'all played half the conference. Y'all still do. You, you, you played, you would, you, you, you would play and beat or battle with North Carolina, NC State, Miami, West Virginia. So whether it was, whether it was the Big East days or the ACC days, y'all, y'all played them and, um. I remember there was, I don't know if you were there yet, but I know during my time in the nineties, I think y'all beat Miami one year, y'all took them to, it was, yeah, y'all be, I mean.
Um, ninety, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, yeah, we had a hurricane. Regular Miami team, I always gotta throw this out there. That wasn't a regular Miami team. And the reason why I say that, almost. Uh, they had Santana Moss, Reggie Wayne, uh, Clinton Portis, um. They had a couple of running backs. Defuse, they had, uh, man, it was, it was.
Nate Webster, Dan Morgan. You probably doing that, you probably saying that, the same reason I say something, when I say we never lost to Miami. Cuz I name dropped because Canes fans get real slick, like we played some team from Jerusalem. Now, we were playing some Hurricanes that went on to be household names.
Number one, first round draft picks.
Yeah, I watched that game from my, um, apartment with my roommate, shout out to my roommate Derek Smith, one of my best friends. We were cheering for y'all. Like I said, first of all, we hate Miami, we're rivals, and we respect y'all. And, um, even when y'all beat us, I mean, it's East Carolina, and like I said, y'all, y'all came up the same time we did. Um, but anyway, man, you know, you had a great career at, uh, East Carolina. And then what happens, you know, do you get it, you. Trial for the league, arena ball, you know, world league, NFL Europe, or you say, you know what, I'm done, I graduated, I'm good. What happens after that?
Yes, uh, another good sto- uh, question cuz I. Yes, uh another good sto- uh question, cause I had a story that uh hopefully one day, I keep saying I'm gonna write a book.
You should.
Get to a one, um but I love. I I finished uh oh one at East Carolina. And I went to some of the combine, I didn't go to the official combine in Indianapolis, but some of the private combines when. Uh you know, they host at your school or other locations with some of the NFL um recruiters. And um did pretty well, some of the workouts, mind you, I am five nine, five ten. That's we come a dime a dozen as receivers and skilled players in the NFL. Uh didn't get drafted and it's funny because the actual year I came out was the year Vic got drafted number one. Uh so they kind of, it was it was funny in in that aspect that, man, we, he got drafted and and I want to follow his footsteps. I didn't get drafted that weekend, however, I got a free agent deal uh with Jacksonville. Jacksonville Jaguars, I went through the training camp uh and the last cut day, just finished practice. Um out there about to get ready to take a shower, um you know, walking on eggshells, cause it's the last day, we getting ready to board a plane to go out, play Dallas Cowboys uh that weekend. Um the guy came and tapped me on the shoulder and uh went in the office with Coach Coughlin and you know, it gave me the spiel, look, you did a great job out here. Um you know, but we just gonna gonna have to release you. Uh so but I I I wouldn't trade that experience here for nothing because I was able to be, get out there and practice with guys. Such as Jimmy Smith, who I always say is one of the most underrated wide receivers.
Big time underrated.
Um Keenan McCardle, who was, he taught me a great deal about the wide wide receiver position, he's actually a coach now. Um and uh in the NFL and just the the some technical things about playing wide receiver that I use to this day. When I coach wide receivers, get an opportunity to and uh guys like Alvis Witit that played at NC State. We one of the fastest guys ever, I I learned so much by being in that wide receiver room with these guys who were just phenomenal at what they did on a professional level. Um after that, I came home depressed a little bit uh cause from six and six years old up until that point, all I knew was football, sports. And uh it was at a point where I felt like, man, it's all taken away from me and I can't control anything. I can't just go down the street and sign up for a team and play, I can't do that anymore. Uh so uh found myself, trying to find myself and uh and and stayed in shape somewhat. Um got a call to go down to New Orleans to uh work out for them, uh see if I can get on with them. Yeah, Brooks was the quarterback at the time, he actually picked me up from the airport, uh drove me to the facility. Uh had a good workout, I was hoping I could at least get on the practice squad. Um after it was over with, uh they told me I did a good job, but I never got a call back. Uh so I went up to Hamilton Tiger Cats in the Canadian League. And um that was a different experience all the way around, uh coming from. American football to Canadian football, Canadian football is a little different.
Very.
Rules, field setup and and it's just a little different. Um found myself back home, uh went through the training camp. Uh uh after our first game, uh uh things didn't work out, so I came back home. And then uh uh started working with Coach Raymond, he called me, he said, look, B two, you coming out, I I I didn't want to do it at first. Um but he said, you coming out here with me at Warren High School and you gonna coach. Um so and he didn't just tell me, he told my mom and she made me go out there, cause uh she said, you gonna do something. So I got out there, started coaching, that was in 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 two thousand two. Um and then I I found myself in it ever since. Um but that that that's kind of what the journey was after I finished from East Carolina. I did graduate from East Carolina with my degree in child development and family relations. Um but then I found myself uh wanting to pursue further education, cause I now, after being out there and coaching with Coach Raymond, this is. The second go around of his influence on my life, uh uh he told me I need to be working with young people. I didn't know how I was gonna do it, but I figured out I wanted to be a school counselor. So I went back to school, Hampton University, he encouraged me with that and talked to some people, got back in in the grad school. I became a pirate again, went from an East Carolina pirate to a Hampton pirate.
No doubt.
Finished up my master's degree in in counselor education. And uh uh started serving as a school counselor and coach. Uh so that that was my my journey uh for my post athletic career. And uh it it is, like I said, it it was just those providential nature of what uh how how God lead you was uh. Is is something that I want to share with people when I can.
And you are sharing it and you're doing it so much because even though, you know, your career, my career didn't go the way we thought when it came to the professional scene. We still were there briefly and we got there and it wasn't supposed to happen, but. Someone that's been following you since I've been done playing and just seeing all the great things you're doing now. I mean, I I come home and your name surfaces everywhere, like, no, seriously, bro, like, it's it's. I'm I admire you, that's why I sent you that video and I'm hearing and seeing all the things you're doing. And even though you you know, your career ended, you still had number one, a phenomenal career. But now, bigger than any touchdown you're scoring, you are saving lives, you're mentoring, community service. You know, serving the community in a way where you're helping, whether it's fundraising, canned food drives, you know, back to school programs. You're still working over um in I C Norcom, you know, as far as with the educational piece. But you are in the streets where a lot of guys will, you know, they may, you know, donate to a GoFundMe or they may come by and get a plate at a. Citywide cookout and they dip out, you are, yeah, yeah, you are in the grind. And fathering your, following your father's footsteps, taking what him and Coach Raymond and your other mentors have given you. And you're just still scratching the surface, cause you're young, so who knows what these next ten years, I'm not gonna use the N word, mayor, governor, but you never know, right? But just talk about your time now as a city councilman. In the city that you once played for on the high school level, now you are an important figure where people know your name. Like I said, you are more than an athlete personified, you are a city councilman, you are educated, you are articulate, you're insightful and you're a leader. What does that mean to you when I say that?
Man, like I said earlier, I first never would have thought I'd have found myself in these positions that I'm in now, because I was, I'm. Whether you realize it or some people can't believe me, but my wife will 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 co-sign with this, I'm introverted. I'm fine being at home, I'm fine uh with some books, I'm fine watching ESPN or whatever, I I I'm fine doing that. But when you are called to a certain cause and it's bigger than who you are. You gotta be obedient to what those that that calling is and I found myself being blessed just off the fact of seeing those that I've been able to. Pour into, so to speak, um become successful in in their their ventures in life. Um being in this city council position, uh like I said, from going from a school counselor, from going from a coach, from going from. Serving as a youth minister uh with my father while he was pastoring and and building these relationships and just wanting to do for people who were. Maybe finding themselves in predicaments where, you know, they were uh maybe hamstrung, so to speak, in in uh. Being able to be successful in whatever capacity that they trying to go into. And and just being able to help provide some doors or help opening doors or resources or 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 uh. Opportunities that people can somewhat just get on a level play, level playing field and then, you know, in twenty twenty, a lot of things were amplified and exacerbated with. How COVID has kind of put a spotlight on how this, you know, social justice, police brutality, uh educational inequities are are plaguing our community. And uh and 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 if we don't have people that are gonna stand up and and speak out and help bring about, I used, I like to use the word shift. There's a lot of shifting that we need to do in order for people that have been underprivileged and underserved for so long. Uh because it it it's been highlighted, uh and and there's so many people, uh I mean, you you may hear my name, but there's so many people I partner up with. Or 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 try to bring some uh uh some type of uh highlights, that what they're doing with some of the activism and and grassroots organizations. That are truly in it and genuinely trying to serve the people of of our community, because there's so many in need. Um then when, you know, with the young people, if we didn't have athletics, sports, even though I had a pretty firm foundation. Um I I don't know where I would be, because that kept me focused, that kept me with a a a sense of being organized, so to speak, and having a a a schedule on what needs to get done. And having people in my ear, such as the coaches that we mentioned, uh and and being on the city council. Seat and serving behind that dais uh every second or fourth Tuesday, I have an opportunity to speak for those people. I have an opportunity to 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 help enhance and enlighten uh uh so many people that may not relate to. Others in 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 that serving these capacities and that's why I got into it, I I got into it to be able to 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 speak for those uh. To help those, to serve those, right, and um and all that was ingrained in me from what I saw from my father. My father, you you know, weren't rich, uh but he was a pastor at church for so long, he's a drive this. This hot raggedy yellow van all over the city and uh I was four, five, six years old. Going and up to my ten, eleven years old, he used to be our rec league basketball coach along with being a pastor. He would go pick up kids in Aqueduct, I don't know if you're familiar with the Aqueduct.
Uh you know, I know, yeah.
Okay.
I used to, I used to live in uh Woodsong and Stewart Gardens, I know where Aqueduct is.
Yeah, so picking up kids on Aqueduct, going downtown on Ivy Avenue, picking up kids, going. Uh uh all these different places and and taking us places on summer trips, I I I saw how that impacted those kids then. Um I really didn't have an understanding of what it was doing until I got older and be like, man, I want to be like my dad. To be able to help take people to a place they may not have ever been able to go unless somebody helped them along the way. With that that hot yellow van, so everything I see I'm doing, man, I I I think about that hot yellow van and trying to get people on board. And uh helping them get to places that they may not have been able to get to if it had not been for somebody uh that to help pick them up and go there.
Yeah, no, and I'm excited and honored, like I said, to have you on my spotlight, but also what you've done so far. And speaking of that, man, just two more questions, one of them being this, uh how can people keep up and follow you? And without giving away too much, cause I know you're still waiting on some things to kind of be approved, but what are some things that you have planned? Uh this upcoming year, now that we're getting ready to open up as a as a state, like, how can people keep up with your events and programs? And what are some things you have coming up this year?
Yeah, well, we're monitoring real close uh with some of the the mandates that our our governor is lifting here in in the state. On the Commonwealth, uh it has been a challenge. Um I know a lot of people are doing these virtual activities and virtual events. Uh we we've done some uh in twenty twenty, uh we didn't have our typical, that is May now, we usually have a small business um. Uh mixer that we usually host every May, uh we're trying to figure out the best way to navigate that with some of the restrictions being lax moving forward. We will get information out as soon as we can put that together. However, for the past three, four months, uh took over this organization called the Tri-City Youth Foundation, we were able. To get kids back to playing football and cheering uh over the spring, we actually just finished our season yesterday.
Yes.
Um that was exciting, yeah, you you know, it it was, I mean, that first day of practice, once we had kids come out to work out, we were getting. Calls from family members, uh not pertaining to the actual foundation, but throughout the course of everything shutting down, as you know. Uh kids are mentally, they're struggling, they're they're tired of being in the house. Um physically, they're they're getting, you know, gaining weight, they're unhealthy because they're not moving around as much. Uh and spiritually, a lot of them were broken, when you talk about missing prom activities, you're missing a a school activity that you would traditionally. Be able to have those social activities, so the social emotional peace was was hitting our kids hard, because you know, we have kids that are. May have four or five siblings and maybe a two bedroom apartment, so and you telling everybody stay in the house uh for over a year. Um so just getting back to a sense of um uh being able to provide those opportunities, what we're looking forward to. Um being that we wrapped up the spring, we're looking at doing some things big and better for the fall. Um when it comes to our youth activities, uh partnering up with a good, good friend of mine who's doing phenomenal things in the city, Antoine Bathea. Uh he's having a week coming up, the first weekend, I might get you the wrong day, first or second weekend of June, coming up soon. Uh we're putting together uh uh an event at a basketball court that we were able to open up. Uh from his uh benevolence to the city of Newport News, uh which is one of the best outdoor basketball courts, the first lighted basketball court here in the city. And uh weren't able to do a lot because of the restrictions, obviously, but as some of the restrictions are being lifted, we're having an event there, uh which well. We we we're starting to get the info out now, because uh it's gonna be a big community event and some basketball is gonna be played, I made shoot a couple of jumpers out there. Uh but not, we're not gonna go with the young boys anymore, um but then leaning into the fall. Uh we just looking to try to just see how we could bring people together uh and and still being safe. Uh in in trying to deliver some of those resources that we've been able to do traditionally in the past. Um the Southeast Community Day parade is something we're looking at having again, which we weren't able to have this past year like we normally done, which is a. Uh one of those things that's been going on for years, events that's been going on for years, uh you you'll get more info in regards to that. Uh we'll continue in January with our school supply distribution, um which we do that for the halfway point of the school year. And that's always a big event, because we try to help students at that halfway point, everybody does stuff at the beginning of the school year in in September. But we try to meet the needs of those that, you know, halfway when pencils are broken and crowns aren't as sharp and. Book bags may be ripped up and whatever else they may need, we try to provide those for the second half of the year. And then there's just some things we're looking at trying to do differently, uh because as you look at twenty twenty, one of the things it has. Shown us that we have to you be creative and use our ingenuity uh uh moving forward, because things will never be how it was prior to twenty twenty. And uh we've just been brainstorming, I got a, I've got a great team, starting off with my wife first and foremost, she's like the person who. I have these crazy ideas and what we can do, she gets the team together and and goes full forward with it. Well, yeah, she she's she's the mastermind behind it coming to fruition. Um but we just been meeting and and discussing how we could uh um make this year. Uh one in which we could get back to doing and serving the community and even a greater way in which we've been able to do um the past few years.
You know, everything you're saying, I appreciate you sharing and that's why I said, I know you have a lot going on and coming up. I just can't thank you enough for jumping on, man, and 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 I I can't wait to continue to see your success as well as your hard work and shout out to Antoine Bathea. Another great seven five seven legend, I gotta get him.
He got some great things coming up too, you know, uh we're excited about some of the things he got, man, he got, with I said, mentioned that one quarter, but he's looking at um. Providing seven to eight more of those courts around in the area, so we uh.
And 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 that's and that's what I'm saying, man, like you and him, yeah, y'all were great. And still great men on and off the field and off the court and there's so many guys like you, but that's why we do these spotlights. Let the community, let the public and the viewers know that you guys are having just as big as impact off the playing field, off the court. And these kids uh and families are gonna remember this forever. And speaking of remember forever, this is your legacy spotlight. So this is a time in the show where we end with your words of insight and feedback to those watching. Um Marcellus, you have had a phenomenal journey, you know, you've overcome some adversity, but you've taken every life lesson you you learned. And you've turned it into a way to give back and to make yourself a better man, you've become a great father, a great husband. You are a prominent member of the community, you're a councilman, um and and you never got complacent. Um and I know you're an introvert, but you are out here affecting so many people in a great way. With that being said, you and I both know, there's gonna be some young man, some young lady or an adult that's gonna see this legacy spotlight or that's gonna see you. That may be thinking about, you know, giving up or maybe saying, you know what, it's not worth it, I don't mean just suicide, I mean just keeping them moving.
Right, exactly.
Not just to athletes watching this, but to, you know, people that support you and people that right now might be on the fence or struggling. What kind of feedback do you want to give them based on your life lessons you've learned throughout your life and throughout your journey? How did, what, if you could talk to them right now, how you want to say it in ending this legacy spotlight?
Yeah, man, um one of the things, if anybody who follows me on social media, whether it's Instagram, Facebook. Uh I I'm not that well versed on the TikTok, trying to still get my daughter, she told me how to do all that stuff. However, one of the things I I I. However, one of the things, uh, uh, hashtag quite a bit is the words pressing forward. Uh, 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 I use that hashtag quite a bit because what I've come to realize. That no matter what we may be experiencing, what we go through, the hate that may come your way. The lies that may be told on you because being in this political spectrum, I, my eyes have been opened up quite a bit. To some of the things you deal with. Um, but one of the things my father always instilled in me. Is that you gotta keep your mind focused on where you're going. And, and I used the, those two words pressing forward quite a bit, uh because no matter what you're going through, you gotta keep pressing forward. You gotta keep pushing through. You gotta keep standing. You gotta keep speaking. You gotta keep shining. You gotta keep striving for something greater. Uh, because while you're on this earth and as long as you have breath in your lungs, God has a purpose for you. And then when I realized that, because I briefly mentioned how when I got cut from my football career, uh I was lost. Uh, you know, I was trying to find it in the club. I was trying to find it everywhere else to fulfill that in me because I didn't know. But once I realized the calling that was on a life that I'm living and became obedient to that calling, I, I had to just. Put everything else to the side and, and keep, what I say is quite a bit pressed forward towards that mark uh, uh, of what God had called for me. And um, and, and if there's anybody who's out there, you having some difficult times, if you are, are, are struggling in, in some end. If you just keep putting one foot in front of the other, you're gonna ultimately get to where you are striving to be. Now, like I said, I never imagined myself in these positions. Um, but what God has for you, I find out, he's gonna make it come as long as you keep pressing forward to uh, uh, moving in a way. In which uh you, you're gonna be destined for success. Um, and, and that's what I just like to share uh in, with any and everybody who has, has goals in mind. Uh, who, who's on the verge, because there was many days where I didn't think I was gonna go through with something. There were many days where I felt like, look, i- i- it's not gonna happen. Um, but I just kept moving forward. It, it didn't happen overnight. Um, like I said, I got my, 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 my beard's turning gray now. Um, but that's just all from, you know. Living life and uh also just being mindful of the fact that what I'm doing is greater than me. And um, and, and the war will come when it comes. Um, and, and I appreciate you for having me on and, and, and. And, and thanking that what we're doing is worthwhile because you're one of those guys too that uh helped pave the way. I know I called a lot of names. Um, but, but that Vic name and, and, and what you did to kind of kickstart the legacy of the Vic name. Uh, because you know, you're one of those guys who come from the peninsula district that you pressed forward and persevered. And, and made it to a level in which a lot of guys prior to you may not have made it. Um, there were some, there were some, I mean, there, there were some of those guys. I mean, there's, there's some other legends that go beyond us. Uh, like the Kwame Lassers and uh, uh, if you want to get to the Leroy Keys and all those guys. You're one of those guys we were able to actually see on the field, play against, to go on. Uh, and, and watching go from Darlington Stadium to playing on, on, on Saturday nights on ESPN. And, and, and you paved the way for a lot of us and, and I'm just trying to pave the way in a different manner. For these young people to know outside of sports, uh, there's a lot of life worth living and there's a lot that can get done off the field. But you can use the field and use the court to set you up, and which is set me up, to be on a pathway. Uh, to impact those long before you could dribble a ball, long after you could dribble a ball or catch a football pass. So um, just keep pressing forward, what I would say, and remain hopeful in, in, in all you do. Um, because that plays a big part mentally, spiritually, physically. If you can have something that you're striving towards. Uh, and, and, and we're hopeful that it can come to fruition, it's gonna come. Keep putting one foot in front of the other.
There you go. I'm not even gonna mess that up, man. There you go. Keep pressing forward from the great legendary, my guy, Marcell Harris, man. And you know, for all the people that support you and that follow you, I speak on their behalf when I say, we appreciate you, we love you. And thank you for everything you're doing and that you will continue to do in the communities, not just with Newport News, but other communities that see what's going on there. And also, thank you for jumping on, man. And to those.
Yeah, when, when you saw some of those names of people you had up here before, I was like, man, I don't know if I can, I can step in behind those guys, man. Because uh, i- i- it's crazy how hard we competed against guys uh on the field or on the court. Like today, I think our camaraderie is even that much more because we realize in that level of competition. Um, that what we're doing now, and, and I, I, like you say, you see some of the stuff I'm doing. I, I see stuff that other guys are doing.
No question.
Young people in the community, and it, it's just, man, it's powerful uh to see the evolution from. Being out there on those football fields and basketball courts to now o- o- on, in the community fields and, and trying to save lives. I- i- it's just, man, it's, I, I, I find myself at night, man, like, I, I, I'm blessed to be able to see uh so many of the guys doing such great things.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no.
That's what it's all about. Look, I got both of them on. I didn't know which one, so I had to put both of them.
I love it, man. I love it. That means, leave a legacy, man. And that's what you're doing, man. So, so all your supporters and all the people that will see this, man, I say thank you. And also, if you want to see it, you'll be on the Victory Life YouTube channel, V I C K T R Y Life. Um, channel as well as uh the Facebook page. I'll tag Marcellus on in it. And again, um, like I say every episode, no matter what you do, no matter where you go, make sure you have a great impact and you leave a great legacy. Thank you, my guy. Appreciate you, man. Salute to you.
Peace. Blessings to you, brother. Keep doing big things.
Thank you. God bless, man. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.